We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is February the 5th, 2024, and this is the Tull City Common Council. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, let's see here. First item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda as presented? There are no changes to agenda. I intend a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Motion for the agenda to be approved by Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Next item is presentation of minutes for approval. Board, you should have three sets of minutes. One is from December the 18th, one is from January 1st, and one is from January the 2nd. Are there any changes or corrections to either of those three sets of minutes?
I have none. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Gerald to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? If there are none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Man, it's stand approved. Next item is comments of citizens. Is there any citizens that would like to make any comments on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. Moving on to committee and ward reports. We'll start first with councilmember Larry Clemm.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just review. I think there are enough copies for everybody except Jeff.
So I'll share with him.
You can share with Jeff. But I'm going to talk about this a little bit later in my report. But I did, and it was mentioned at the Board of Works meeting, I did participate in an inspection at the Obrak House in January. I'm participating in a, an economic development series of webinars that's being provided by Radius, which is an economic development group out of Orange County. It's a series of four webinars. The last one will be this Wednesday. So I appreciate them offering that webinar, and it's provided me some information on economic development efforts. All of us had the opportunity to participate in the AIM workshop a couple of weeks ago in Indianapolis. I found it very beneficial. On January 22nd, I attended the historical, Tull City Historical Society meeting. Katie Papano with Ohio River Scenic Railway presented plans for construction of a flatboat in partnership with Spencer County to reenact Lincoln's trip from Rockport to New Orleans that was done in 1828. So 200 years from then will be 2028. So there's a group that's trying to build a flatboat and also to reenact Lincoln's trip from Rockport to New Orleans. And Katie's kind of spearheading that in Perry County. She made a great presentation at the Historical Society meeting. On January 30th, participated in a meeting. It's called, the group is called SAWS. I'm not sure what it's S-A-W-S. I'm not sure what that acronym stands for. But it's a group that has been in existence in Indiana for 21 years. They build ramps for people. And Mark Finn with the EUCC Church and Josh Harris with Habitat for Humanity are kind of spearheading the effort in Perry County. They have built one ramp in Tull City already down on Fourth Street. And these ramps are built for people that the household income has to be below 80% of the area median income. They have to have either a permanent or long-term disability and there are a few other conditions. But their hope is they're going to be affiliated with the state offices in Indianapolis. There's a hub affiliate in Evansville, and Perry County is going to work, my understanding, with the hub affiliate in Evansville. So it's a good group of volunteers. They're going to try to meet the need in Perry County for people that have a need for ramps that are constructed. The ramps do not become a permanent part of the house. They're made so that they can be removed if they're no longer needed. And my understanding, by not being a permanent part of the house, they're not subject to assessed value and paying property taxes on it. Plus, they can be reused. I noticed on Facebook, and I'm excited about this, the Bliss Artisan has announced their plans for Factory 1867 in my ward, thank goodness, at the Farmer Swiss Plywood Building. They plan to expand their manufacturing of ice cream, some office spaces, some retail spots, and my understanding, two event venues that they plan to have. So I'm not sure the details of all that, but they did have an announcement on Facebook, and I look forward to that, that taking place. It's called Factory 1867. The handout I presented to you is our excerpts from our comprehensive plan that we adopted in April of 2022. And I just wanted to highlight a few of these, these efforts. The first page, I've circled, it's a page dealing with our future transportation plan. And you notice the thing I circled, Kentucky slash Indiana Bridge connection off of Highway And then the next page deals with some strategies. And I've highlighted, and I'll just briefly read this one paragraph. In addition to the various state road weights feeding into the community, the Lincoln Trail Bridge to the south is a major asset to Tull City as it allows for Kentucky residents to travel to the city for shopping needs and employment. Ensuring this bridge is properly maintained is important for Tull City as it is the only major river crossing within the region and directs traffic from both sides of the river through Tull City. Because this bridge is the only river crossing in Perry County, the need to consider the feasibility of a second river crossing to provide redundancy was discussed during the planning process. Tull City and Perry County officials can start initial conversations with the state to understand the long-term feasibility of constructing a new bridge over the Ohio River. While this is not a short-term goal, it will be important to understand what options are available in case the Lincoln Trail Bridge is ever forced to close for any reason, such as river traffic hitting the bridge or a severe accident, effectively shutting off between Kentucky and Indiana in this region. And I would remind you that I think the bridge is 60 years old this year. So the age of the bridge. The next page shows, at the top of the page, it shows high priority areas. Improve ADA accessibility through sidewalk improvements, high priority areas such as downtown along Seventh Street. Repair existing sidewalks with a focus on those connecting neighborhoods to destinations. Extend sidewalks along State Road 66 to the south of the city towards Canton. And as I think all of us know, we are getting federal and state funds in fiscal year 26, I believe, to construct a sidewalk along the east side of Highway 66 from Washington Street to William Tell Boulevard. I would hope that sometime we could take a look at building a sidewalk on the west side of Highway 66 from CVS to Fifth Third at the least. I know crossing the creek presents a little additional problem there, but.
Would that goes through our backyard?
I know.
No, I tell you, there are people walking all the time through grass. I mean, we had to mow grass. We had to go over so they could walk, you know.
I know that. So anyway, that's pointed out some action steps. And then, under 7.2, they're communicate with state officials to ensure the existing bridge is well-maintained and coordinate on any future construction which may limit traffic entering and exiting the community. I don't think I have to tell anybody what the damaging effect it would have if the Lincoln Trail Bridge was ever closed for an extended period of time. And I would hope that we could work towards some of these goals. On the next page, and the reason I bring this up is because of the presentation that Katie made to the Historical Society. In addition to reenacting Lincoln's flatboat trip from Rockport to New Orleans, the scenic railway group, railway group under the leadership of Katie wants to provide flatboat trips in 2025, 2026, and 2027. And I'm not sure where their point of boarding is going to be, whether they're going to try to do that at Tull City, whether it's even allowable in Tull City, or whether they're going to do that in Troy, or where they're going to provide those trips. But those obviously will be shorter trips. They're not going to go all the way to New Orleans, but they hope to offer some.
They were one time, I think.
Some scenic river trips. And I mentioned, under Strategy 9.2, and I'll just, I don't want to insult your intelligence, but I think this is important. I want to read this, this last paragraph also. Although the city currently has a boat ramp, it is very difficult for residents and visitors to use due to the steep incline and position along the river. These conditions make it nearly impossible for those with larger transient docks, either permanent or seasonal, could be installed, which would allow for visitors to enter, enter the community by boat. Those traveling along the Ohio River would be able to stop at the city and visit downtown for events, entertainment, dining, or just to stop in while traveling along the river. While improving the boat launch is a goal for the future of the city, it may not be possible to improve upon the existing location, given current conditions. Identification of other areas that are more suitable for boat launch or docks within the city should be the first step in this effort. And then, on the next page is the action step, and it lists as high to determine if existing boat ramp, boat launch should be improved for better access to the river, or the boat launch should be relocated. To my knowledge, I don't think we've done anything on this particular action step, nor the action step identified regarding the bridge. And I point those out because those are potential ways that we can use edit funds to address some things that were stressed in our comprehensive plan that a lot of time and effort went into comparing, as well as I think we spent, Janice, how much did we spend? $70,000?
On the comp plan?
Yeah.
Fifty.
I think it was fifty.
Fifty?
It was fifty with a 10% match, so I think it was five of our own. It was.
Share.
Okay. Well, we spent a lot of money and a lot of effort in developing this comprehensive plan, so I think we ought to maybe spend some time, and maybe since we've got new members on the council, maybe we should spend an hour sometime with a special council meeting and just go through the plan and talk about some of the items.
Be great.
Just to bring everybody up to date.
You all should have a copy of the comprehensive plan in your binders. So review it, and if, I'll try to see whatever my schedule is, we can set up just a special one where we have like a work session to read over. If you have questions, you can flag them, because I know a few of you weren't here. It might be nice to update you on what some of the meaning, what's behind this or that or so forth. So it's a good idea.
Thank you. That concludes my ward report.
Okay. Ward two, Mr. Brian Steen.
Just had a few citizens thank the street department for putting the red signs up.
Yeah. They got them. I told you they'd get on. Thank you, Jim. Hand to the street department.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. And we have a crash going up Franklin and Mozart that they, people are talking about.
Okay.
I don't know if they're that bad. Derek, I don't know, you probably haven't heard anything, have you?
No, I haven't.
I went through there, and I mean, yeah, there's some cracks, but.
Sealed or cracked, cracked seal, okay. We're actually going to be having some of that going on. Well, we just applied for a community crossings grant, which includes sealing. If we get awarded, they'll begin to do it, so it'd be a good time to have them look at those. Jim, if you want to go ahead and take a look at that, maybe there's something we can do before then, in-house.
I'll get with Jim.
I mean, obviously, hopefully, if we don't have any more cold weather, that would help that situation, other than water getting in it. And there's a lot of water rolls down that hill.
Oh, wow. Groundhog says we're okay.
He did.
That's right, Jim.
All right. Anything else, Brian?
I believe that's it.
Mr. Philip Simpson?
No report.
All right. Mr. Mike Finley?
I attended the Tull City Strong Committee meeting. A group of about half a dozen citizens that voluntarily are attempting to create fun activities for Tull City Perry County residents. They sponsored last year the Sweet Stroll. They've got another one coming up this, this month, February 17th. They're also considering a wine stroll. Also, the committee is headed up by Heather Watham, and they're seeking to get more volunteers. Like I said, it's about half a dozen. It's a good, good committee and good intentions. At the same time, these activities benefit businesses too, Tull City businesses. That stroll, they sold, I think, 120 tickets last year, and the, the idea was for the families and the kids to walk up and down Main Street and get a ticket punched, and then at the end of the stroll, then they were, had a chance to win something. But at the same time, all these businesses got potential customers. The kids enjoyed it, candy, cookies, whatever sweet was presented by the owner of the store. So it's a good, good committee. I enjoy the meeting.
I tell you, last year I participated in the Sweet Stroll, and it was wonderful. I mean, to see Main Street, there was lots of people walking up and down Main. It was a really nice event, and we can't thank them enough.
Also coming up is the mayor's Easter egg hunt.
Easter is early this year.
Is it?
End of March.
Yeah.
It's a lot earlier, so.
Yeah.
Groundhog better be right.
That drew, it's our third year doing it, and it drew hundreds last year. I mean, this park was packed with kids. We had five or 6,000 eggs, I don't know, a lot. And our school intern helped fill the eggs and stuff, and it was a really great event. Nice opportunity for kids and families to come down.
The next meeting is February 8th, if any of you care to join in, we'd appreciate it.
Where's it at?
It's at the bank upstairs in.
The William Tell Center over here?
No. Yes, yes, the William Tell Center, right.
Okay. What time?
It's at, let's see here, 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m., okay.
February 8th.
February 8th. Anyone who wants to can make it that would like to join that, I'm sure they'd welcome you. So thank you. Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
All right. Gerald?
Just to let the public know that we all attended that AIM conference in Indianapolis. I thought it was really good, especially for the new council members. I've been talking with our street commissioner. He's took on a couple of projects that's been requested. Millings, put some millings in alleys. They've done, I think, two today and going to do one tomorrow. So kind of, this time of year, we have time to do that.
Sure.
That's about all I've got.
Okay. Any statements or comments from the city attorney or the clerk treasurer?
Nothing.
I also attended the AIM conference in Indianapolis at the same time that all the council members did, and they had separate meetings for the clerk treasurer, and it was very informative again this year.
Good.
Learned several new things.
Wonderful. All right. That concludes the committee and ward reports. So moving down to O Business, item A, solid waste fee edit. As you all were aware, in our last meeting, we had a good discussion on consideration for using edit dollars for, to cover these solid waste fees, and I gave you, give you the opportunity to get some questions you had to answer between now and then, do some homework, talk to people, and so forth. As I've stated last month, if the council so chooses to do that, I would find that money in the edit plan to cover it. So it's kind of for discussion. I don't know what, we'll talk amongst council members first. I don't know what question you have. And Jeff, I think probably has some stuff. I don't know, do you have stuff you want to share as well?
Got info if you want to, when you get to that.
Okay. So council, who has the, one of you had the first, or want to go first discussing it?
I can.
Your council member wore one, so why not? Makes sense.
Okay. It works for me. I spent a little bit of time looking at this, and I, one thing we need to, I think, consider is to back up a little bit, take a step back, and examine the purpose of the solid waste management district. And as I understand it, the purpose is to reduce the amount of solid waste going into landfills by recycling more. I think that's a good idea. Most of you probably don't remember this, but I remember when we used to burn our trash in trash barrels that lined city alleys.
I'm not old. Yes, I remember.
And we used, I'll bet you're not this old though, Chris. I remember when the city landfill was down by Maulzers on the other side of the levee, next to the Ohio River and our wellfields.
No, I'm not that old. That was in 18, like 30, no, I was kidding.
Well, it wasn't quite that old, but it was a little older than you. I remember because I used to go down there with my BB gun and shoot rats. That's what I did for entertainment, so.
Thanks for sharing.
Pest control.
And, and Tull City is paying, based on some financial reports we had, just in landfill fees, the trash that we pick up in the city, $60,000 to $70,000 a year, just to dispose of that trash that we pick up. And that doesn't include the cost, the labor cost, the fuel, maintenance on the vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, for hauling the trash. That's just landfill fees that we have no control of. So the idea of decreasing the amount of solid waste going into landfills and increasing recycling is a good idea. I noticed the proposed budget for solid waste is, I think, flatlined at $300,000. I'm not sure how that figure was derived. I've gone into the details on that. Also, I want to restate, and I've stated this previously, Tull City is part of the county, and Tull City residents should not be paying twice for the same service that the county provides to all residents. Perry County has a projected balance of little over $2 million at the end of 2024 if edit funds are used to support solid waste. I don't think that should come from edit funds. In fact, I think it's probably improper, if not allowable, that edit funds are even used for solid waste management district. I recently saw statements by county officials that some $500,000 of interest has been earned, and the $200,000 has been saved by changing health insurance providers. Maybe some of those funds could be used to support the solid waste management district instead of edit funds. Now, let's talk about the $45 fee. Is it fair that Walmart pays the same fee as an individual homeowner? I don't think it is. You know. But that's, is it fair that Walmart pays nothing for solid waste management district? Nothing, zero? Because that's what's proposed. The burden would be shifted from employees, from employers, pardon me, companies like Walmart, to the wage earners who have the edit tax withheld from their paychecks. How about we do what 90 other counties are doing? Put it on the property taxes. I've done a little bit of research on property taxes in Perry County. And according to the figures I was provided, I got these off of Gateway. Perry County has a net assessed value of $775,171,913. That's the total net assessed valuation for Perry County. If you divide that by 100, you get 7,751,719. If you take the $300,000 proposed budget, divide that by the 7 million figure, you come up with a property tax rate of .0387 per hundred dollars of net assessed value. A little bit less than four cents per hundred dollars of net assessed value. The Department of Local Government Finance has told us that the solid waste management district can be funded by property taxes, and that that property tax does, that rate does not have to be included in the general fund rate. We've been provided that information. There's a method you have to go through to do that, but it can be done. So, and I didn't make a handout on this. I don't have a secretary, and I don't know how to type, you know, I'm a tech, so I just wrote all this down, but I'm going to read it to you. I did, I just looked, it's all public information. I just looked on the public records. You know what Walmart would pay under, currently, I think they pay 45 bucks. The commissioner's proposal, what's in front of us, to sign their local agreement, they would pay nothing, nothing. No business would pay for supporting solid waste district. If we put it on the property taxes at the, let's say, four cents, Walmart would pay 4,648 bucks. Walmart is Tull City's largest assessed value business. Walmart is our biggest business, okay? Look at another example, Maulzers. They're our, Maulzers Creston, they're our third largest business. I don't know what they pay now. I don't know if it's $45 or some combination of that. The commissioner's plan, they would pay nothing. If it was on property taxes, they would pay $1,189. GE, GE is our eighth largest assessed value, net assessed value in Tull City. I assume they're paying $45 now. I don't know that. Under the commissioner's proposal, they would pay nothing. If we put it on property taxes, they'd pay $713. And then our 10th largest business is Regency Properties. I think they pay more than 45. I think they pay by occupant in their, in their shopping center, but I don't know that for sure. Under the proposal, they would pay nothing. If we put it on property taxes, they'd pay $705, okay? So those are just some commercial examples. I did a few homeowner examples. I looked at my own home. Public record, anybody can look at it. My net assessed value is a little over $97,000. If I put it on property taxes, my cost would be $37.61. Now, remember, that's the net assessed value. The gross assessed value on my house is close to 200,000. Okay? I looked at another constituent in my ward, and their net assessed value is a little over 44,000. They would pay $17.34. They would pay $17.34. I looked at another property owner. Their net assessed value is $294,000. Under property taxes, they'd pay $113.86. So then I just looked the average to stay at the $45 rate if we were using that and we wanted to put $45 on the property taxes. The net assessed value of a house would be $116,279. So probably the gross value of that house, and I'm just guessing based on mine, would be a couple hundred thousand, so. I believe... I'll summarize and then feel free to talk. I believe that the current fee is unfairly assessed. I believe that. I... It's not fair for Walmart to be paying $45 and for us that live in Tel City to pay $45. It just isn't. I believe forcing the city to use its edit funds to support solid waste management district is wrong. As I said earlier, I think it's improper and possibly not allowed. I believe we should use 2024 to evaluate all the options rather than hastily adopting the proposal, proposed interlocal agreement. Thank you.
We'll just go down the line, I guess, right? That work fine? What are your thoughts?
Well, I echo what Larry said on a few things, but I kind of go back to the old what we had here last month. When we had the lady talking about her prescription. I... Maybe I'm a little softy, but I think that $45 should go back in people's pockets. That's my thought.
Okay.
The way I feel.
Okay. All right. Phil?
I've talked to several cities or towns. It seems like everyone in the state does it different. Some people throw it on their bills. Some people live in a big city or urbanized area, so it just goes on their trash bills. So I couldn't really find a standard. I don't think we could find it in our regular budget to pay for this because that's already set for the year, right?
Yeah. Unless we don't... We could always do additional for the unappropriated kind of stuff, but it's not... But it's not possible.
That's running close. It's going to be running close this year also.
I probably wouldn't recommend that, but not that it couldn't be done.
In edit funds, we get, you know, four times our bang for our bucks back because some of those are matched sometimes. So it's... So I'm just looking at every option right now. That's all I got.
All right. Fair enough. Mike? And if you don't have any comments, I should have said if you don't have any comments, don't say anything. I'm just giving you the opportunity to speak, so.
I did a little math, not my strong suit, but it comes to 12.3 cents per day. And the director of the... Last week when we were at the Solid Waste Committee, she verified this, 86 cents a week, $3.75 a month. I don't know many homeowners that would notice... I mean, that $3.75 is equivalent to one breakfast burger or breakfast sandwich at McDonald's a month. It's not that much of a sacrifice. I mean, it's... I know these... There are people that are hard pressed, but most homeowners aren't hard pressed enough to miss $45 a year, especially when it can be spent, like Larry says, so much better elsewhere.
Okay. Anything else?
Not now.
Okay. Joe?
Well, you know, we've had a couple weeks to look at this thing. I agree with Councilman Kleeman that it should be on our property tax. That gives the opportunity for people that can go long form to write that off. I can't. I don't have enough, but it gives you the option. We're one of two counties in the state that it's not on property tax. I think there's other ways to fund this thing than what's being proposed. And I'm going to yield the rest to the city attorney because he's got something, I think.
Is that everybody? Spotlight on me.
Mr. P. Cartierio?
Well...
Yeah.
Let me start. For many years, I was the attorney for the solid waste district. I've not been involved in any of this discussion from the time it came up, the solid waste district effective today. I sent a letter to Ms. Wheeler, who I consider my friend, resigning my position on the solid waste board. So in terms of discussing anything, advice I would give to the solid waste board, I can't do that. I have given them advice in the past, not on this issue. I believe my past involvement with solid waste board would likely make it a conflict for me to give too much advice on this issue to the city. So with that in mind, I spoke to the mayor and we sought out a legal opinion of outside counsel. We received a memo, which I... It's privileged and confidential, and I am telling you I'm not going to share because it's privileged and confidential. I can briefly summarize. One of the conclusions that outside counsel reached in reviewing the proposed interlocal agreement and reviewing the statutes with regard to these matters is that it would be, at best, legally dubious to use edit funds for this purpose. The statutes are quite specific with what these funds are supposed to be used for. There are... There are three types of LIT funds. These are actually LIT funds. There are public safety funds. Obviously, we're not being asked to use public safety funds. There are certified shares. We are not being asked to use certified shares. And there are economic development funds, edit funds. In reviewing those statutes, their conclusion was that the edit funds are not properly used for this purpose. They have done a much deeper dive into some of the background. We did not ask them to dig into the tax issues. As Larry mentioned, there is a process that the county could go through to implement a tax that would not cost the county any of its tax levies, wouldn't cost the county any money. That is a completely separate issue that we did not have outside counsel address. But I think the best summary I can make is simply that the proposal that has been made currently to the city of Tel City would not be a proper use of edit funds under the Indiana Code. There was some mention of the possibility that if the city of Tel City or other municipalities in the county did not enter into an interlocal agreement, that they would be... The residents of those municipalities would be separately billed by virtue of their lack of participation. Outside counsel's evaluation of that is that that likewise is not legal. Would open the county up to litigation. You can probably tell I'm pretty uncomfortable right now with this whole situation because I am. I hate that fee. I hate it. I hated going to meetings for years representing the solid waste district. I used to jokingly tell past directors, "Somebody get the fire extinguisher because we're going to have torches and pitchforks. We're going to have to put out some fires." Every time, we would have a meeting to raise that rate. That department has been underfunded since, probably since its existence. I do not know why it was one of two counties that was funded the way it's funded. But we are now having what is a controversial discussion about these issues for something that none of the folks sitting here or in this building had any hand in originally creating. What's the answer? I don't know. I don't know. I do not believe, from the legal advice we've advised, that we've received, that the proposed interlocal agreement is the solution. I do not believe a system of billing some county residents different than others is the solution. I believe that it would be wise for the city, the county, the other municipalities in the county to put their heads together and come up with a legal solution. And that's my belief.
Okay. Counsel, any other comments on what each other said? Or Jeff, or whatever?
Also, we provide every other week pickup of the recyclables at no cost to the citizen.
Well, it's on there. It is part of their trash collection fee.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. But...
So you get trash once a week and recycling every other week?
Correct.
But the county makes money off that. We get nothing. Correct, Mayor?
Now, we do use some of their trailers and one of their trucks, I think. Maybe two trucks. I don't know. Jeff? One truck and one trailer or two trailers? Two trailers. So they do allow us that, but we pay for the gas and so forth in the truck.
Okay.
But, you know, we do collect that, yeah, so. On our dime and give it to them and they sell it and make money, yeah. You're right to say that.
What outside counsel made that?
Denton's Greenbaum. Or Denton's Bingham Greenbaum.
She's scary, I think. I think, but...
Keep talking, counsel. Okay. I thought it stopped recording. Just went blank for some reason. Counsel, do you want to open the floor for any comments of citizens? It's your meeting. I just preside over it. I'm giving you guys the opportunity, if you want to hear residents, what is their concern or their issues for, against, whatever they want. Is that okay?
I'm going to start.
Okay. Counsel, would you like for any comments of the public? Citizens, if you do, we'd ask that you please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the minutes, please. I would encourage you to try to keep your comments to a minimum. I mean, don't... And you're welcome to talk, but let's not keep it, you know, for an hour. You know, three to five minutes would be acceptable, I think. It's really not set for a debate, but we just would like to hear your comments, maybe concerns and...
I've got a question.
I'm sorry. What's your name? We... I know you, but the public doesn't.
From Tel City. I just kind of briefly wrote down what each said, starting with Larry. Larry, when the tax was first asked to be implemented, to pay for this fee, and you worked for Lincoln Hills, did you agree with it then or not?
May I? I think we're supposed to listen to the comments, not interact with...
Okay. Then I will state that Larry was very against the setting it up on our taxes when it was going to... Or mentioned to be implemented that way. When he worked for Lincoln Hills. So you can answer that or not?
I... I don't remember that.
When it would have affected you and Lincoln Hills and Rames because you would have been charged that too. So, I mean, everybody has a right to their own thing. I totally disagree with... I do not think this would have come forth and went as far as it has if it was against state statute. There's clearly a line in there that was read out loud that stated it could be, even if it was for one year, to give back to the people. That's what I stated in that message. Give back to the people one year, just one year, and figure it out between the seven members that are supposed to be, that have sat on this board some for years, on their hands. They finally come and come up with an idea to give the people a break. This is a fee that everybody's against, everybody. And they can get a break now for one year. Is all I'm asking, is one year. And then hold those seven members' feet to the fire to make something happen. If you have to have your 30 days, 60 days, I don't remember what the contract said or the ordinance, but hold their feet to the fire and make them get something else happen, whatever that is. But one year, that's all we're asking from the public. One year. Give us one year of a break on this doggone fee. We pay it in Tel City through our water bills. We pay trash. We have to pay tags. It might not hurt me as much as it hurts Grandma Jones, but it... People, they feel that $45, whether you guys do or not. They feel it. There's a lot of people feel it. And all I'm asking is one year. Give them one year. That's all I'm asking.
And let me just put your response on it. I agree with you. The $45 fee is unfair. It's unfair that Walmart pays a $45 fee and you pay a $45 fee.
Then that... And that's a good point. It was discussed at solid waste board to set it up on a different structure. I know Walmart takes all their trash while hawking, does not use the center for trash nor recyclables or anything. They haul their own. And they still pay the $45 fee, as does Walmart, I'm sure. So, you know, that's neither here. I'm asking for one year. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, and what I've been told, and I don't want to mistake what Jeff has said, but the proposed interlocal agreement that's been presented to us is not a proper agreement for the city to sign. Is that what you said, Jeff?
That was the conclusion of outside counsel.
Correct.
And to present it, to present us with this in November and hurry up and make a decision, I wish we could have started a year ago. We'd be better prepared to respond.
Randy, did you have a comment? Make sure you... Just if you could state your... I know we know who you are, but people watching do not.
My name is Randy Cole and I initiated this. I was only on the solid waste board maybe for a year while others were on there for five, six, 10. We did run this interlocal agreement through counsel and they said it was okay. Now, at this last moment, we also consulted Indianapolis, got the approval back from them. So whatever the problem is, whether it's the interlocal agreement, that's not the issue. The issue is, is whether you want to dedicate edit funds that have increased for the group in excess of $200,000 to meet 67% of the cost of operating the solid waste. And that's it. And giving the local taxpayers a break. That's your question. Now, there's details here. I wish we could have been afforded the opportunity to ask our legal counsel, whatever your legal counsel has recommended, rather than... You're at a point right now you're going to be asked to make a decision and this weighs upon you, which is the legal option. Well, you're here. We're at the wire now. Had you had an issue, we could have approached this at a much easier pace rather than putting you on the line. The answer strictly is, these folks all pay it through edit tax. They all pay it through the $45 charge. The proposal, and I would have never guessed there would be this much controversy, given the community a break. And the majority of these $45 are paid by individuals. This is the way it is.
I do hope you're not saying that this is Tel City's fault, that we're down to this last minute wire line here, right? You're not implying that, are you?
I'm just saying, had there been something legally that you were concerned about, it would have been appropriate to have expressed that and then we could have asked our legal counsel, "What about the decision that Tel City's being told? And is there a remedy? Is it illegal? Is it not illegal? Why did you come to a conclusion and they came to a different one?" Then we can actually sit here and have a valid discussion, not necessarily about the legalities, but whether you want to provide some type of relief to the citizens. And then that would be the issue.
I have a question.
Sure.
And when did you present this proposal to the council?
This all came about...
Randy, I ask a question. When did you present this interlocal agreement proposal to the council?
Sometime the end of last year.
In December.
I don't know. I sent it to Chris.
And I sent back questions, which you never responded to my emails that you said you didn't get, which we met. I truly...
When I came down, I didn't receive them. I honestly...
I don't know. I sent three of them. I don't know, but I mean, I did my best.
I asked my vendor whether there was a problem with the email and he said there was. So I don't know what happened, though.
So I don't accept the proposition that...
So, so I, I don't accept the proposition that, that we caused this delay.
I don't think I necessarily said that, Larry. What I said was, this is an opportunity. And if we just talk about the opportunity, if you choose to use edit funds to give these folks a, you either want to or you don't. If there's a legal issue, then we'll get it resolved or we won't. We'll, we'll do whatever that takes. We're not going to do anything illegal. The county's not interested in doing anything illegal and the city is neither. The question becomes whether you want to afford them a break. If you have another funding mechanism in order to do it, let's talk about it.
I just did.
The edit money currently has been collected and will be distributed. Your taxes, property tax, will take at least two years because they're a year behind. And then you have to get it enacted by the legislature if you're going to put a special tax on it. So it's going to take some time.
No, no, you're, I think you're incorrect on that.
Okay, then if the legislature doesn't have to approve it, then it can be done anytime. But it still won't be collected till the previous year because we're behind. And the question becomes, I mean, I guess, I see this a lot of times, that people keep talking about someone stepping up and doing something. And it seems like if you don't spend what seems to be a long extended period of time, is it not valid? I don't think we have to start to be a little decisive, make decisions and move the community onward. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Any other comments? Please make sure you state your name for the, and address, please, for the minutes. We don't know who you are, but the public watching may not.
Hi, I'm Megan Frisley, 217 Ninth Street. I guess my biggest concern, I just moved to Tell City, okay, but I've been a county resident my whole life, minus a few years. I, I am in a place stupid here because I don't understand why this is being asked of the city when this is a county charge, right? So I called and I got an account information. And if edit funds, like if there's a legal issue with the city, don't do it, whatever. I don't understand why this was put on the city at all when there's 1.2 million in the edit fund of the county. So if you wanted to use edit funds, I'm not sure why you guys aren't tossing this back and saying, well, there's money there. So if you want to use edit funding, your citizens from Tell City paid and those funds go to the county. I mean, I understand what Mr. Kleeman's saying and I understand what the county is saying. But I don't understand why this is a city issue anyway. So it's like a lot of argument lately. And as far as someone stepping up and doing something, I think for me personally, pushing it off on someone who shouldn't do it as the city, the county needs to take responsibility for it and pay the damn fee, in my mind, which needs to be discussed at a county meeting, not a city meeting. That's my personal opinion. And I want to say, I hate the $45 fee. I got a late fee on it when I moved back because I didn't know about it. And it was super nice because I truly didn't know about it. So if every other county is doing it another way, I would personally like to look into other ways and have the whole billing system restructured because we don't even know what's billed. And it's kind of like a baseline for everybody. And I liked what you said about Walmart paying a higher fee because there are single moms out there who can't afford $45. There are elderly people who can't afford $45. So the fee is a problem. I'm not saying it's not. I just don't mean it's the city's problem.
Thank you, Megan. Any other citizens? Remember, please state your name and address for the minutes, please.
Everybody knows.
Well.
And I cannot stand behind that podium. It reminds me of.
Well, you just, but just make sure you state your name so people watching at home may not know.
You need to build church.
I think we all, I know you and I think this quarter is, but viewers at home may not.
I have yours, 1438 Nineteenth Street. I'm going to say it again. This is our tax dollars. This is out of our paycheck. Don't add it to our property taxes. Don't add it anywhere else. Listen, what was it? Our property taxes didn't raise our value, our value of your home, why not? So what's to say that won't happen again, right? So let's give the citizens a break and listen to the taxpayers. Jeff, as far as it being not legal, I'm sure Mr. Cole did his due diligence.
In November.
The laws of law.
It's not uncommon for lawyers to disagree.
And as far as waiting, my bill's due in March. He wants to pay it.
Mine too.
You know, I'm a single mom. Yeah, that was my fault. But I pay it. And it's like I said last time, I pay for a lot of services I don't get. Why are we having sidewalks put up 66 when I've lived on Nineteenth Street since 1974? A snow route.
Point of order, Mayor.
Let's try to, if we could, he's saying point of order. If we could stay on task with the solid waste, I think is what he's saying. Is that right, Gerald?
Yeah, you're straight.
I was going to bring it up.
Well, we're discussing this edit thing. I mean, this, that's what we're trying to discuss.
At least you lighten the mood and everybody laugh for just a minute. I mean, everybody's so tense in here.
We're using edit funds for, correct? We use edit funds for sidewalks. I've lived on Nineteenth Street since 1974. A snow route. I got 11 kids on my block that have to stand out in the street and wait on a bus. How come we don't have sidewalks?
That's a good question.
It's a great question.
I've been asking that question for four years.
And you know what? If we have edit dollars, maybe we can do that.
And you know what? Yeah, last month, it was said that the sidewalks are the homeowner's responsibility. I don't want them off traffic. Okay, so then why should we, I'm back on the solid waste. So why should we?
You're killing me, Pat, in a good way. I'm laughing, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm not laughing, I'm not laughing at you, I promise. Bringing some lightness to the tension that we're about to cut with a knife. I'll give you that. Well, I mean, I'm. Credit will do, credit will do.
Okay, so everybody wants to put the blame on this one, that one, this one, that one. Yeah, Perry County Solid Waste. I live in Tell City. I pay Perry County Solid Waste. Everybody in this room, yes, I see.
Jeff don't.
Yes, I do.
Do you?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, nevermind, I was just kidding.
So, yeah, we're not, Walmart, maybe it's not fair they're only paying $45 a month, but you know what? You're getting their edit funds out of those 200 employees.
Not getting their edit funds. We're getting the employees edit funds.
Exactly. That's what I have.
That's the point, Pat.
Yes.
The employers under the proposed plan will pay nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
But here's.
It's not just Walmart. It's McDonald's, it's Arby's, it's Wendy's, it's ATTC, it's Wopaket. Every employer, they don't pay edit taxes.
No, they don't. No, they don't. But they pay a solid waste fee. Hey, hey.
And that, and that's money that's coming into the community from outside the community that will be lost. How much that is, I don't know. I'd love for somebody on the solid waste board to be able to give me the information, how much income we have from employers that are located outside of the city. The owners are. The owner of Walmart doesn't live in Tell City.
Well, I'll, I'll teach you some. But the people that work at Walmart do.
Yes, exactly.
So you're getting, I say, the board is getting their money. So why can you not take, what'd you say, $12 per person? It was, it was last, last meeting. But anyway, at least listen to what your taxpayers are saying. We are heading here begging you to pay a $45 fee. You know? How hard is it? If you can't do it.